Call the meeting to order, all three commissioners are present. Properly posted on September thirtieth in District One, latest in the prayer and pledge.
Yes, we have with us today Reverend Aaron Kruger is the Senior Minister at Crown Heights Christian Church. He has been the Senior Minister for ten years, and before that, he was the Associate Minister at Crown Heights for five years. He and his wife will be celebrating their twentieth anniversary this year, and they have three wonderful children. Aaron was born and raised in the Oklahoma City metro area, and he is passionate about making a positive difference in Oklahoma City and beyond. Reverend Kruger, you have the floor.
Please stand and let us pray. Oh, Holy God, we thank you for allowing us to be here today. We ask that you give us open ears and open minds to what we have to hear. Help us to listen before speaking, and give us the guidance that we need to make decisions that better our community and the people for which we serve. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And the opening of the bids.
Good morning, this is for Project Two Six One Two Zero Dash Eleven. Behavioral Care Center Services, we received three proposals. The first is from Cope Incorporated. The second is from First Class Healthcare. And the third is from CREOKS Mental Health Services. And I think it should be noted, we received a number of no bid responses, and those will be distributed with the summary that goes out on these as well. And that's it.
Okay.
I move they be tabulated and returned.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Also want to say thank you to Steve Buck and Kathy Costello and all the others that'll help with the evaluation of that. I think it'll be a good thing having people that aren't familiar with the mental health world actually doing the evaluation, so thank you.
Okay, and then a blanket, is there a change?
Uh, there is, there were four additional blankets that came in after the deadline. Um, you've all got a copy of that, and they're highlighted on that second page. They were all reviewed prior to being at today's meeting.
Okay, do we need to accept it, or, okay, is there a motion to accept this into the record?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there a motion to approve of the corrections?
Motion to approve of corrections.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any individual consideration on the consent pocket?
Motion to move items five through seventeen.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You and I. Do you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure, District One.
District One.
Absolutely, item number eighteen is a reimbursement from ODOT, Critical Emergency Relief, um, for a pair of sinkhole near Northeast Thirty-Sixth and Anderson Road, C V five, move for approval.
And before we vote on this, I'd like to thank the crew for what they've been doing, as far as the work at Spencer. Uh, we've been working hard, and I'd like to publicly thank my entire crew, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Item number nineteen, Resolution Thirty-Eight Forty-Eight, a resolution recognizing October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Oklahoma County. If you'd allow me a read, I'll read the resolution. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer, the second most common cause of cancer death among women in the United States and Oklahoma. And whereas in the United States, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. One person every two minutes. And whereas approximately three hundred sixteen, nine hundred and fifty women and twenty-eight hundred men in America will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And whereas this year, approximately thirty thousand four hundred and sixty women in Oklahoma will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and five hundred seventy will die from it. And whereas in twenty twenty, cancer accounted for one of every five deaths in Oklahoma, representing the fourth highest cancer death rate in the nation. Whereas most bran- breast cancers are detected by the individuals themselves, and early detection can make the difference between life and death. Whereas many women are reluctant to have screening mammograms for a variety of reasons, such as the cost of testing, lack of information, and/or fear. And whereas access to screening mammography is directly related to socioeconomic status. And whereas inequities exist in breast cancer treatment for under-resourced communities across the country, between black and white women. With black women facing a forty percent higher mortality rate. And whereas it is projected that more women will use this life-saving test as it becomes increasingly available and affordable. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized breast cancer has risen from seventy-eight percent in the nineteen forties to over ninety percent today. And whereas we have made significant progress but recognize the ongoing need to de-stigmatize breast cancer and work towards ensuring that all have access to quality care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby declare October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Oklahoma County. Be it further resolved, the Board of Oklahoma County Commissioners stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors, those still fighting, and those who have lost loved ones. Furthermore, the Board expressing solidarity encourages all elected officials and employees to wear pink on Friday, October third, to stand with those affected by this disease. Um, if you would also allow me a little bit more of your time, um, we have Community Health CEO Isabel Lawson with us here today, and also from Community Health, Margarita Shaw. I'm going to invite them to come up and talk a little bit about this.
Good morning, Commissioners, if you could pass it to them. My name is Margarita Shaw.
Good morning, Commissioner Mann, I work for Community Health Centers of Oklahoma, and I want to thank you all for allowing us to present about our amazing Community Health Services of Oklahoma programs and services. Our mission is to provide comprehensive, accessible, and affordable healthcare services of the highest quality. And one way we're able to implement that mission on a daily basis is that Community Health Centers of Oklahoma is a five-oh-one, C-three nonprofit corporation in Oklahoma City. And underneath Community Health Centers of Oklahoma, there are seven fairly qualified health centers. Most individuals and families know us by Mayor Mahoney, Memorial Health Center, and Spencer, providing medical, dental, behavioral health counseling, pharmacy, case management services, and we have a MAT clinic, a medication-assisted treatment center. Underneath that umbrella is Perry Clausen Family Medical Center, one thousand six Northeast Seventeenth and Kelly, three blocks from the VA. Again, providing medical, dental, behavioral health counseling, pharmacy, case management services to individuals and families. And also, we're Healing Hands for the Homeless. We have been located downtown Four-Eleven Northwest Eleventh for the last thirty-seven years, providing medical case management services to our homeless population. And we also were blessed by the Middale School Systems, we were able to purchase in October twenty twenty-two, the former Highland Park Elementary School, which is now the Highland Park Family Medical Center. Since May of twenty twenty-four, we've been providing medical, lab, behavioral health counseling, and we will be building in a dental and pharmacy clinic for those underserved individuals in that community. And last but not least, we're in Potawatomi County, Shani Family Medical Center, providing medical case management, behavioral health counseling. We're in Lincoln County, Dorothy M. Smith in Kearney, Oklahoma, providing medical case management services for those individuals. And also, we're in Logan County, Mayor Mahoney, Langston, and Guthrie, providing medical, behavioral health counseling, and dental. And as you all are aware, we focus on is a fairly qualified health center preventive and primary care services. That includes educating our families and individuals about the importance of having a medical home, and the importance of having a primary care provider, which keeps them out of the emergency room that brings down the cost of care for everyone in the state. Last but not least, we specialize in our hurry on individuals that have diabetes, high blood pressure, congestive heart failure, COPD, and asthma. And as you can imagine, with those diagnoses comes a high cost of prescription drugs. Well, if you're our patient, you're able to participate in three forty B plan that brings down your cost of prescription significantly. And I also want to reinforce that we serve people that have health insurance, Sooner Select, Medicaid, Oklahoma, Complete Health, Humana, Aetna. And we also serve individuals that are uninsured. And when I mean they're uninsured, their copay is based on their income and their family size. Now I will go on to the reason why Commissioner Lowe invited me. As you all know, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, as well as one in eight hundred and thirty-three men. The breast cancer mortality rate in Oklahoma is twenty-two point nine percent compared to the nineteen point seven national average. That's why Community Health Center of Oklahoma provides an annual My Sister Myself event, and you all have been given the flyer, which will occur Tuesday, October the twenty-eighth, from eight-thirty AM to five-thirty PM. And that will focus on breast cancer survivor testimonies. We will also have the ability for individuals to schedule mammograms, and we're also going to make it a fun and educational opportunity. And for the first time, Community Health Centers of Oklahoma is providing a Pink Ribbon Sunday program, partnering with Oklahoma Project Women and several churches. And our goals during that time is to increase mammogram screening, increase mammogram screenings, breast cancer education, and to provide mammograms to over one hundred women. So we hope you all can attend, and I want to reinforce one more time, Community Health Centers of Oklahoma provides three D mammogram imaging screenings, Monday through Friday, at Mayor Mahoney Health Center. And you can also schedule mammograms for the October twenty-eighth event by calling Mayor Mahoney at seven-six-nine-three-three-zero-one, extension twelve-fifteen to schedule. And again, last but not least, we accept individuals that have health insurance, and if individuals are uninsured, please let them know that they can have free mammograms at no cost made possible by Oklahoma Project Women. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for that resolution?
I, I do know Commissioner Davidson also has some words as well, and I'd like to beg him for addressing this issue with me before, uh, today, as far as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of things. Uh, one, I'd like to, um, end this motion to, to make a motion to actually post, um, the Community Health flyer up around our buildings, I think it would be good, since we have a lot of people that come in here, they could use the help, so they've got a lot of places that they could go. So with your permission, back in the back row, if you're fine with us posting it, we will post it up around our, our buildings here downtown and, and try to get the word out even more, try to make you busier than you probably want to be. But, uh, yeah, thank you, this is always a, uh, special thing to me and my family, I appreciate you putting this on there. I know that, I believe that you joined us, uh, with your yard guys are wearing pink, I went out there yesterday and saw all the road crew in their pink, uh, safety vests. So not only are we celebrating here, we're also celebrating those that have survived and remembering those that have passed due to this. So, thank you, Commissioner Lowe, and I'll make the motion to approve the resolution and to post the flyer across the Oklahoma County buildings.
Second.
If I could interrupt Commissioners.
Yep.
We do have the Director Law Ra- Law Library, Vanita Hoover, who would also like to speak.
That's good. I think.
Sorry.
That's okay. I am a breast cancer survivor, so I want to thank you all for bringing recognition to this, um, and for the services that are being offered, because catching it early saved my life. So it is something that helps, you know, with it, so, um, thank you for bringing this to notice, and thank you guys for Friday wearing pink.
Absolutely. Thank you for all the work everybody's done on this, uh, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And likewise, we have another resolution with our four-H team here, so somebody like to come forward and read your proclamation?
Hi, um, today I'll be saying the four-H pledge, my name is Molly Adams, um, I pledge my hands to the, I mean, I pledge my head to greater think, clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to better service, and my health to better living, my country, my community, my country, my world.
The proclamation. Whereas four-H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost six million youth across the country thus far. And whereas four-H has helped nearly ten thousand youth in Oklahoma County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas four-H is delivered by Cooperative Extension, a community of more than a hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas National Four-H Week showcases the incredible experiences that four-H offers young people, and highlights the remarkable four-H youth in Oklahoma County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas four-H's network of six hundred thousand volunteers and thirty-five hundred professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all four-Hers, helping them grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County designate October twenty twenty-five as Oklahoma County Four-H Month, and commence the Oklahoma Four-H Youth Development Program of the Oklahoma Cooperative Extension Service, and the four-H members, volunteers, leaders, supporters, and extension educators, who have made the program a success and urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program, which gives youth the chance to learn together and be their own part of Oklahoma County Four-H, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and state land-grant university system.
Hi, I'm Randy Jasper, and I'm going to talk about the Oklahoma County Hugs Drive. The first frost in Oklahoma usually occurs in the first week of November. Donate your winter, your winter wear, hats, underwear, gloves, socks, and scarves to benefit Citizens Caring for Children and the Homeless Alliance. Please drop your donations to the Oklahoma County OSU Extension Office.
And we will place those boxes around throughout the county. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May we have a picture, please?
Yeah, and obviously, we have a reception here that will follow this meeting, okay?
Speaking of pictures, Commissioners, do you want to do one after Vanita? If, if there's any survivors or anybody around that would like to take pictures after, we take pictures with the four-H, we could do it all at once. Or anybody wearing?
Oops, sorry. Practice.
Maryland leaves town tomorrow, I'm Marry Law. I'm in trouble. Okay, thank you for everybody who came for that. I have, uh, my annual jail inspection report, I did a surprise inspection on Monday night. I went with a ten-minute notice during shift change, during the meal dis- uh, collection, for meal plate collection, and medicine dispense. And, uh, found the staff to be remarkable, they rolled with the punches. It wasn't a gotcha thing on my part, I just wanted to see how that worked at that hour. And, um, found the place to be remarkably clean, and, uh, with, so when others in the past have toured, they said, well, I bet you it was all set up and staged. So I feel like that was an accurate reflection of how it is on a normal basis. Staffing shortage was obviously an issue, we inspected the laundry, the kitchen, the medical, a male pod and a female pod, as I standardly do. Um, checked inventory, talked about the inventory team and what they were working on. And I guess there's a review policy about maybe not having the retention as long on the storage, because there's an amazing amount of stuff. And I think those that do inventory never get enough credit for the remarkable job they do of keeping all the items on people's person when they're brought in. Um, and that apparently collection has really expanded, so it's always those little things that you don't really think about. Uh, there was an issue with the, um, inmate wardrobe, I guess there's been a, a, um, shortage, and that they are working on getting a new provider, uh, from one that we have standardly had for a long time, and I think the new provider is, I understand, going to be cheaper, and they produce a more durable product. So we're looking forward to getting that, but in the meantime, there has been, uh, an inconvenience on some of the inmates for having to wear theirs for an extended pair, a period of time until they could have cleaning. Uh, we talked about issues with medication and getting prescriptions when they're transferred from an additional facility that is brought over to our facility, and, uh, so some issues to work through on that. Um, continued to find things clogging the vent, which shows the design flaw of the facility where inmates have the ability to reach those vents. And of course, that predicates a big problem on the airflow situation, which is just a constant battle. So when we do hear legitimate complaints about temperature control, it's often caused, or at least further damaged by the inmates clogging up vents in one cell which forces air more in another. So that's just a constant vigil, but they were cognizant of that and working on trying to remove those things. And, um, I visited with two male inmates and two female inmates, and they each shared, uh, some comments that, you know, for improvement, and also for praise, which I think is interesting, because if they're there, you've got to assume they don't want to be there, and so to offer anything that's positive, I think there's a lot of credence that should be put into that. And one of the things was that they thought that the food was fair. And so I think that's been something that we've had a lot of criticism on in the past, and I appreciated the fact that there was some recognition that what we serve was, was definitely edible and, and somewhat pleasant. So I appreciated, um, Logan and trustee Jim Holman, who assisted on the tour, and their time at a, I'm sure, an inconvenient hour that they would rather have spent with their family, but it allowed me a perspective of seeing the operations at a different time of day. I've never gone at that particular time of day in each of my annual year inspections, so that is my report, unless there's any questions, I will move that we accept my report.
I, I do have a comment, um, I appreciate your inspection of the jail, obviously, we have some issues, uh, with the county jail, but there's been a false narrative that's been pushed out there over the last several years, as far as, uh, that the employees there are bad people, they don't care about their work, they don't do a good job. There are some great people at the Oklahoma County Jail that are doing great work. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, your, your report, and I'd also like to add, we haven't had a death at the county jail in over several months. A lot of people are not talking about that, you know, when there's a death, that's sort of, you know, first thing on the news, uh, that's the first thing in the paper, front page. But we're not talking about the good things, and we need to talk about the good things that we're doing. And, uh, we have some really good people over there, obviously, we have some issues, we have some concerns, but we do have some good employees over there that are working hard, so thank you.
Uh, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because I also went to booking in the Sally Port- Uh, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because I also went to booking in the Sallyport and, um, watched them work with the X-ray technology that we've recently, um, installed. And, uh, I had a number of the staff members actually tell me about improvements that have been made with the trust and, and their trust in the trust, and so I appreciate their sentiments too, because I asked them just for their frank opinion, which I wouldn't have judged no matter what they said. So I thought that was an interesting response also. Did you second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 County management.
Good morning. Number twenty-two is an annual contract with Pierce Couch, as well as twenty-three.
Is there a motion for those two items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You, Stacy.
Item twenty-four, you've seen before. It's an easement with O G and E to power up our Behavioral Care Center site. Uh, we had to bring it back again because there was an issue with the signature and notary pages. So we, it's just a redo of, of the same easement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that similar on twenty-five?
Item twenty-five is a new easement. Uh, this is to Oklahoma City. This will allow us to set our water meters, uh, at the entrance at Twenty-Second Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-six is, uh, an amendment with standard testing. It's our testing company, Behavioral Care Center. Uh, it's the same contract with the same rates. We just need to get a little bit more funding in this item. Our burn rate for, um, testing to date has been on the high side. We had some soil issues and the contamination issues. Uh, we just need to load some more money into this, uh, contract. Fifty thousand dollar increase.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 And the pinnacle, item twenty-seven, this is our served project on Luther Road. Uh, it's in District Two. Uh, Pinnacle's, uh, doing the right-of-way work for us. This money's actually held at ODOT, so we approve the claim here and send it over. The first one, twenty-seven, is for twenty-five hundred dollars. I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-eight's a like item, uh, same project for Pinnacle for five thousand dollars. I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then item twenty-nine, this is one of our ARPA projects on the fifth floor. It's a change order to have the expansion joint cover. There's an expansion joint all the way through this building, um, on the west end, about a third away into the building. And, uh, this will allow us to cover that joint, uh, so it won't be seen or tripped over. For fifty-one hundred dollars per cadell.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dean?
Uh, good morning. Yes, this is for, uh, we're doing another order, uh, laptops for the DA's office and for us. It's just a new lease agreement, so they want a signature. It's just additional stuff.
Motion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what that was, so thanks for coming next one. Planning Commission, Eric.
Yes, uh, the first item from the planning commission is a final plat. Uh, this plat is located at, uh, Northeast Fiftieth in Peabody Road in District Two. Uh, in this particular case, the property that's being platted consists of forty acres, uh, across five lots. Uh, the majority of the lots are just a little over six acres. Uh, the planning commission approved this item unanimously, so they're just here to get approval to have the signatures of the Board of County Commissioners to be filed for the plat. I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next item is another final plat as well. Uh, this is located off of Dobbs and Wilshire. This is, uh, two lots that consist of twenty-five acres, and the reason this is in front of the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners is because one of the lots is smaller than five acres, which kicks off the plating process. So even though it is just two lots, that is one of the requirements that have changed recently in the update of the, uh, subdivision regulations back in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the planning commission approved this item unanimously, so they're just, again, they're just here to get the signature so they can file the plat.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. Christie?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, this is for our new bond fund. This is the issuance of the two hundred and fifteen million that we're about to do. Um, this is just a resolution to open an investment and have those funds invested that aren't used on a daily basis. Um, it is contingent upon the meeting this afternoon, the one-thirty budget board, where you will approve opening the fund.
And I was asked this recently, this exhausts all the remaining bonds that were on the ballot that was approved by the voters, right?
That is correct. Yeah, it was two hundred and sixty million. We issued forty-five million in twenty-twenty-three, and now the two fifteen, so yes.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioner comments, District One?
No.
Three?
No.
And, uh, we have executive session, so we'll need to go in here, but I think that there's no reason for y'all to not go ahead and start the party. Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion to recess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Action on item forty.
Action on item forty is a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Either way. Okay. Long as Sharon's got it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item forty-one, I think it's proceed as discussed on all of them, isn't it? Or do we have to do subject to?
Yeah, no, no, we've got to do.
Unclaimed.
Items, yes, exactly.
All right, go ahead, and I'm sorry.
So we can actually do items thirty-five and thirty-six.
No, no.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. We've already done forty, so we can do items forty-one and forty-two. To proceed as discussed, is that your motion?
So move.
I'll be second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then items forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five would be a motion to disclaim subject to any unpaid taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any citizen participation, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need a pause, or we can just go on? Okay, we can call the PBA together, all three trustees are present, it was properly posted on September thirtieth. And is there a motion to approve September twenty-fourth's minutes?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Recurring items, is the claim, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And departmental items is an agreement for services with AVL Systems Design.
Yep, this is a no additional fee that will actually add better sound.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any citizens to speak for the PBA or board comments or new business, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.